I ask that there be no applause, we not cheering for each other because there are people in this group who may not agree with you and we don't want to appear as we are bullying anybody. We want to have a peaceful discussion and promote a good discussion. And thank you for respecting that. And we'll begin the citizen comments. So if you would please come to the podium and please form a line so we can make this as expeditious as possible.
Good morning. My name is Bill Hughes and as I said before, I put an application in for the pickleball committee. I'm just wondering why we're going to discuss pickleball sound abatement today. I think that should be an item given to the committee to make a decision because no matter what you do today for it or against it, you're setting guidelines for that committee and I think you're taking away their independence. So I suggest that that discussion be terminated. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Melissa McIntosh. I'm a resident of Punta Gorda and I'm here to support pickleball because I find that it is very healthy for our community and for all of us to have a healthy activity and it's a park where there's no drugs at least, right? That's fair. And also, our taxpayer money has paid for that park to be built the way it is now. We've done a lot of great work there and I think it would be a shame for those courts to be taken down. And it is our park, just like Pelosi thinks that it's her house. It's not. The park is all of our park. And we want to keep that pickleball court right there, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Susan Chaplin. I'm at 91 Vivante and I'm a full-time resident in Punta Gorda. And I would just like to ask the city attorney how the city can close four or especially eight of the pickleball courts when in fact, the pickleball community provided funding for the construction. Also, I would like to keep the pickleball courts. I am in favor of a sound barrier at the Gilchrist Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ann Taylor, 2145 Charlotte and Molly Court. Been a property owner in Punta Gorda for 15 years and a permanent resident for six and a half and played pickleball for most of that time. In fact, I remember meeting Nancy at the pickleball courts one summer when she was campaigning for city council. Just like to say that it's a great sport. It's a great way to meet people. It's a great way to stay active. And we love our park. We love the park, the pickleball courts there. I do have to go other places sometimes to play in the county when it's overcrowded, but it's great to have a facility here in the city that the city supports. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Riley and I'm a member of the Pickleplex Board. First, I'd like to say for the record that the Pickleplex was never intended to replace the courts in Gilchrist Park. It was instead intended to provide the much-needed extra courts that we need for Charlotte County. The Pickleplex Board supports keeping the Pickleplex, keeping the pickleball courts in Gilchrist Park and the sound abatement fence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Brunken. I'm a pickleball player and a resident of Punta Gorda. I encourage you to vote to keep the eight courts and to provide for a sound barrier. Pickleball is a unique sport unlike any others. You can have a range of talent. It is truly multi-generational. I have seen beginners. I have seen very talented people play that are inspirational. I have seen parents and grandparents play with kids and grandkids on those courts there. How awesome is that? So I would encourage you to vote in support of keeping the courts and providing a sound barrier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Asha Sparks. I've been a resident here 19 years and I've served in schools and Bible studies and stuff like that, but my passion is kids. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is I taught a few of the kids that I babysat and they in turn taught their families. And we wound up having picnics in the park and it was just so wonderful to have that family time. And I don't, I can't imagine that happening anywhere else. I suppose it could, but I just am so grateful for that time in the park with the families. That's it. And I support the sound thing.
Hello. My name is Pamela Morgan and I'm a full-time resident of Punta Gorda. And I want to say thank you for Gilchrist Pickleball, for myself, my four children, and my grandchildren who come very frequently to Punta Gorda. Just left yesterday to play pickleball. But not only my grandchildren are already planning retirement. They're eight and 10. And they know they have to go to school, but they're planning their retirement to Punta Gorda just to play pickleball. And by the way, I walk or ride my bike every day, five days a week, to pickleball. So I don't need a parking space. But I just want to thank you so much for providing us this activity in Punta Gorda. And I do support the noise abatement. Thank you.
My name is Bill Winters, 27110 Jones Loop Road. I'm originally from Michigan, came from Tennessee, but I moved to Florida six years ago. I was in Port Charlotte for three years and used to drive 11 miles to play at Gilchrist. After spending some time here in Punta Gorda, I found that I loved the community. I love the fact of the pickleball courts and I bought a home here. That was my first reason. But very close to that was the second reason, and that was the pickleball courts at Gilchrist Park. I support the barrier if you decide that that is deemed necessary. But absolutely, I've heard a few people talk about reducing the courts. I think for the state of Florida, I think for southwest Florida and Punta Gorda, to go in the opposite direction that every other community in this state is moving toward with pickleball courts would be a poor decision on your part. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Morton. I'm a full-time resident, property owner of 900 East Marion Avenue, Unit 1301. I want to thank the media for giving us so much attention and for absolutely shocking me the other night when they said $64,000 because I had never heard that price tag before for the sound abatement. I'm in favor of keeping the courts and I'm in favor of the $12,000 fencing.
Hi. My name's Lynda Moore. I'm a full-time resident. I live at 255 Bel Air Court in Punta Gorda. For nine years, we bought our house and we enjoy everything in Punta Gorda. We love it. We sold our house up north because of it. We do everything down here and love it, and especially pickleball. And I play three days a week. And you know, the famous saying is if you build it, they will come. And that's what you all guys did. You built it and they came. And they're still coming. And there's a need, a big need for pickleball, just like everybody else is saying. And you know, the times were changed. The parking got changed. I think you should just let us play in peace on the eight courts that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robin Slabota. My husband and I have been residents of Punta Gorda for 14 years. Last year, we decided to build in town because pickleball was very important to both of us. We are owners of a national marketing company. We're under a lot of stress constantly. We are grandparents. And I think that the time spent at the pickleball courts has not only been very healthy for my husband as a cancer survivor, but for me to have something to do outside of my office with people who I really enjoy and have truly found a wonderful time with. So I appreciate the sound abatement consideration and keeping our courts. Thank you.
Good morning. It's nice to see all these friendly pickleball faces. And I thank you to the dedicated council members for hearing us today. My name is Laurel Hanson Phillips. My husband and I retired a few years ago largely due to the availability of outdoor recreation. Punta Gorda is a charming community and Gilchrist is an extraordinary public waterfront recreational park dedicated to all forms of sports, leisure, and cultural activities. The park provides access to our estuary system as well. I'm here to show my support because pickleball is a fast-growing inexpensive sport for all ages. As a 65-year-old woman, the Newark kid on the block, learning to play a new sport, I can put my paddle up for a few times a week to play with people of all ages, cultures, in walks of life. I love to play at Gilchrist because in between games, you can enjoy the shade and natural beauty of the waterfront park. There's no place else like that here. I do not understand why anyone would suggest reducing access to the only free courts that I'm aware of in Punta Gorda. We need more public courts, not fewer. Gilchrist Park is an investment in the whole community, not one neighborhood. I support the reasonable proposal to install this sound barrier on the street side of the courts to minimize the noise drift into the neighborhood. I appreciate the consistent effort of this council, this council has made to preserve the courts and the integrity of our extraordinary waterfront park and the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm Kathleen Shanley. I live at 1431 IKEA Stud Drive in Punta Gorda. I'm in full support of the $12,000 sound barrier option at Gilchrist as well as continuing maintaining the eight existing pickleball courts. Gilchrist Park and Recreation offers all ages the option to play pickleball, tennis, basketball, use of the playground, picnic area, walking running path, from Fisherman's Village to Lashley Park along the beautiful Peace River. Gilchrist Park exudes energy and a healthy lifestyle multi-generations enjoy. Gilchrist Park and Recreation is one of the main reasons we purchased property in Punta Gorda, not only to play pickleball, but to take advantage of its many amenities. Gilchrist Park is unique in its ability to offer park and recreational activities. A few in the neighborhood are against pickleball due to noise, so let's move forward with the sound barrier. Let's keep Gilchrist Park as it is with the addition of a sound barrier option on the pickleball courts. Let's keep our multi-generational community going and growing together.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lucy Masso. I'm a Canadian snowbird. And we decided to buy a property here in Punta Gorda because of Gilchrist Park. We had been renting prior to that and chose this area when we rode our bike and saw all the pickleball players and the community there that has offered us so much friendship and so much, so much love. And we've partaken so many activities with all of our friends that we've met there. And closing that would be a huge step backwards. It's a community park. It's not just for pickleball. We have all different levels of play, all different ages that play, and more and more young people are playing. And I have had friends come who don't play, but we can play and they can go to Fisherman's Village and have lunch and come back. And you know, we use these services in the area. We spend money in this area, all the pickleball players. And it would be a huge setback for the community, for Punta Gorda to take away any of those courts. So I'm in full support of putting up a sound barrier and keeping everything the way it is. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Peter Krumzik. I live at 2002 Val Harper Boulevard, Number 1612. So I'm a citizen of the city itself. I moved here because of the outdoor activities. I wasn't a sailor or anything before, but it was really walking through the park and seeing people play at night that attracted me to, I can do something down here and there's outdoor activities besides walking, biking, playing. I was one of the original ones that started playing down there during the daytime when there was only four courts, the lines painted on top of the tennis courts. So as a letter to the editor said, you can call me a picklehead. But there's still people that walk by. In fact, Monday when I played, there's still people interested in playing the sport, how to learn it. And there's people that stop by all the time just watching people play. So still an interest today that there was years ago when we decided to actually build the eight courts down there. Now, I wanted to add one other thing about the pickleball players. I'm a chairman of two Team Punta Gorda committees, Paint Your Heart Out and the Team Builds, which is Building Habitat. Pickleball players participate in both of those community services. Last year, we painted seven houses. Three of the houses were staffed by people that play pickleball. So the people in the community are giving back into this community because they like it, but they also want the activities to be able to play outdoors. So I'm in favor, even though it was, when the courts were built, we talked about a sound barrier. It was rejected at that time. I'm in favor of a sound barrier. I'm not in favor of restrictions to four courts or anything else. Let's put up the sound barrier. Let's alleviate noise that may be down the blocks from there. And I think that everyone would be happy with that. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is John Taylor. My wife and I live in Punta Gorda Isles, own a home there. There's three points that I want to make today. One, there are a lot of city voters that play pickleball. Two, pickleball is not noisy. And three, Gilchrist is overcrowded. Now, lived in, I played like Peter in some of the very first games that were played at PGI on the temporary, at Gilchrist Park on the temporary nets. And I've seen the exponential growth in pickleball in that time. The city council should be very aware that many players playing there are city voters. Debbie Carey came out to the courts when she was campaigning to meet players. She asked for support, told us that we were, she was behind us. She was elected over another candidate with much greater name recognition. And I think that makes the point. My second point, pickleball is not noisy. If you stand across the street, you'll hear for yourself. There are people having fun and there's a lot more people there having fun than can really fit in the space. And that's my third point. The courts are overcrowded. We need more space. The Pickleplex will help. The Pickleplex will not be enough. Yesterday I was playing, there were eight courts filled. There were 11 sets of paddles stacked up. There were 32 people playing, 44 people waiting to play. And that doesn't count the people who stayed home because it was too crowded and you had to wait too long to play. I think the city needs to support pickleball and with more courts. I'm neutral on the sound barrier. The sound doesn't bother me. If we need the sound barrier to keep pickleball in Gilchrist Park, then I support the sound barrier. Otherwise, I think it's not necessary. I hope that I made my points. There's a lot of city voters that play. Pickleball is not noisy. Gilchrist is overcrowded and more courts are needed. The 16 that are coming at the Pickleplex is not enough to support the growth. And I hope that the city council will support more pickleball courts elsewhere and leave Gilchrist open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim Green and it looks like its pickles need to hire the amateur radio lobbyist. Nice job, gentlemen.
Hey, that took four years.
We're still working on it. I wrote this letter that I will submit for the record. I'm not going to read it. But first of all, thanks for your support for the Pickleplex project. You guys have stepped up. I encourage you to continue to do more and thank you for all you've done in that regard. Nine months ago, I purchased a place here at 241 Coldaway in Bridgepoint Condos largely because of pickleball at Gilchrist Park. It's a national treasure across the pickleball community throughout the entire country. We go back home to Michigan and we talk about Gilchrist Park. Everybody hears about it, has been here or wants to come play here. We are a fun-loving bunch, a respectful bunch, and I would encourage you to entertain any compromised approach and continued dialogue that would approve of the preservation of all eight of our Gilchrist pickleball courts. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Barbara Panhouse and I've lived in this area for almost 20 years. I do love pickleball. I play it almost every day. Another thing that I'm going to say is our best friends are sitting right in the front row here. They're from New Jersey. They have a lovely home there. They are selling that home on the beach to come live here in Punta Gorda because of pickleball. They had friends here a couple weeks ago. They came and they just love this area also. They are also looking right now to rent in the downtown area of Punta Gorda where they can walk to pickleball and they can walk to restaurants. On Sundays, people play at the pickleball facilities. They either go to Fisherman's Village or they go to Hurricane Charlie's. The restaurants here are booming because of the pickleball people. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Diana O'Peal. I'm a resident of Punta Gorda. I'm a homeowner. I'm a taxpayer and I am a voter. I am only an infrequent pickleball player. However, I do urge you to keep all the eight courts intact in Gilchrist. I think they're sorely needed as most people have already acknowledged. If necessary, I would support having a 10-foot sound barrier on the courts to help with some of the residents that have homes there. However, sometimes the homes, the sound, it's not, it's portrayed as being an all-day event. And actually, the heavy use is only for about four hours a day. And the people that are residents, they do have a lot of advantages of having a park there. The one advantage is there's noise. We don't really have many places in Punta Gorda for this kind of activity. It's one of the few places that is around and what happens next. Do we want to use the park? A park is made to use. It's not to be used as a showpiece. And by removing the pickleball courts, that's what it becomes. Another thing is, you know, during the meeting, I saw a lot of positive remarks about our community, about how much people love our community, about how we are welcoming and open. And I urge us to be as positive as possible and try to keep that. Think of the positive things associated with pickleball such as the exercise and the socialization and us attracting wonderful people to our community that are law-abiding and not using drugs and actively supporting all of our businesses here. I've heard innumerable remarks, very, very positive remarks about pickleball. TripAdvisor had us, it listed Gilchrist Park listed as being the pickleball heaven. So that's, that's great. So I hope to not become a victim of our own success in getting so many people to come to our community and play pickleball. I really urge you to support pickleball, keep the courts open in conclusion. Let's be positive and open and a welcoming community. That's the community I came here for and the community for which I love. So please help us.
Thank you.
My name is David Peroni. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer of Punta Gorda. I'm going to be brief. I'm in support of maintaining all eight pickleball courts. I'm in support of the noise reduction if necessary. And everybody else has pretty much said everything that needs to be said about pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Jerelyn Searle. I'm a full-time resident here on 2521 West Marion Avenue in Punta Gorda Isles. I just wanted to voice my support as everybody else has for pickleball, keeping the eight courts. And I think a sound barrier probably would be wise considering the intensity of recent discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sheila Ager and I live on Red Esplanade. Thank you to the council for an opportunity to be heard. Obviously, I'm somewhat outnumbered today. It does seem like there might be a concerted effort to get one particular side out today. But I do appreciate council members listening to everyone's concerns. My home is southwest of the pickleball courts, so any type of sound barrier that you choose to put up will probably help me. But that's not the final problem and never has been. I just, I don't just live by the court, by the park. I'm a park user. And all too often, in the discussion of the serious damage done to adjacent homeowners, it's ignored that the noise and the congestion harms many other park users as well. And obviously, there has not been a concerted effort to get them out today. But if you've been following what was on next door, Fisherman's Village, you know that there are a number of people who feel that way. If the proximity to the noise is distressing, and as someone who has lived with it for the last years, I can testify to that, then it must be distressing to other park users as well. We could try to weigh the numbers, how many Punta Gorda residents use the courts versus how many residents would like to see the park more available for quieter use and enjoyment. But those numbers aren't the final issue either. It's not just about doing the compassionate thing for a minority of citizens or the common sense thing that may well be for a solid majority of citizens. It's about doing the right thing. And please, I believe based on everything that I could read, this impermanent sound barrier around the courts would be pricey, ugly, awkward, and labor-intensive. The council has a lot of important time-consuming inexpensive decisions coming up, dealing with growth and the master plan and others. The decisions about pickleball are definitely contentious. We can see that. But ultimately, they're fairly simple. Please take Gilchrist Park pickleball burden off the table and as soon as the first courts in Pickleplex open, close the courts in the park. It's the only permanent practical solution for the neighborhood, for the city as a whole. It's always going to be contentious. It's always going to be a problem. And by the way, don't let the pickleball committee, the city's pickleball committee, move the parks to somewhere else close to somebody's houses. It's just not right for the city and not right for the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marshall Fernhaus. I live on Viatunis. I've been here now three years. I'm a pickleball player. I agree, most of the things have been said. I think, I think these days, we have a divisive, divisive type of mentality, our way or the highway. I can fully appreciate some of the homeowners and having difficulty with noise, et cetera. It is a public park. It's meant to be used by all. That doesn't mean that any one factor should be really favored over another, but I think we need compromise here. So the homeowners need some consideration in terms of noise and so forth. But I think the pickleball players bring a, they're successful people. They bring to the park a law-abiding group that tends to keep, shall I say, less desirables from the park, which is something that we all want. So I'm in favor of trying to come up with a practical solution and noise barrier to help the residents. I think that it is a public park. Public parks change. Everything changes. So if you have, if you buy land and you have a view of the harbor, someone builds a high-rise across from it. Suddenly, your view that you paid for and...
I've heard all this. But the difference is, like somebody said, it was so crowded yesterday. People couldn't play. They had to go home. I have to deal with that every day. And it's not just four hours a day. It's eight in the morning to eight at night. If it's only four hours a day, then let it open at eight and let it shut at 12. This is constant. I've been in this town. I've owned that house for 23 years. I've renovated seven or eight houses downtown here. I was in that house before the park was even used except for the car show that they put on. Putting up a sound barrier, we let them invest their money in there and now it became our problem that this noise now falls back on the residents and the homeowners. It's a lot of money to pay for people to play pickleball. It wasn't intended for that park. It wasn't intended for that size. We don't allow baseball in the park. We don't allow football in the park. Everybody's very, very, because maybe football or baseball bring undesirables. But I'm going to tell you, I have lived across from that park for 21 years and from eight in the morning to eight at night, I haven't seen undesirables in the park. Something's got to be done. It's not fair to the homeowners. And I realize there's 40 homeowners versus 600 pickleball players. And the park is a gem and all these other things. But I have to live there. And my feeling is if we can spend this kind of money and put up walls and barriers and everything like that, this is killing my property value. And I've been told by people across the street, you should move, you should sell, you should get out. Well, Art Rimbold, who's next door to me, his value of his house to sell has dropped $300,000. So I'm feeling if our house values are dropping, maybe our taxes should drop because we have all this extra money to build walls around the park and take care of this pickleball thing, then maybe they'd need to reduce our tax base... thing, then maybe they'd need to reduce our tax base because it's killing our property values because nobody's going to buy a house on Reda with that across the street. And everybody here goes home. They bang the ball for four hours or three hours or two hours, and like they said, they go back to the aisles, sit on their lanai, nice and quiet. They don't have to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi Federici, West Reda Espinade. I heard people saying, "Keep Charlotte County beautiful." Well, the wall around that's not going to make it look beautiful, okay? They said, "Let us play in peace." How do I live in peace? I don't. They say the park is a showplace. You think putting up that barrier and that wall will make it a showplace? I don't think so. I am dismayed to find out that the pickleball players were told they have your support. Listening to that, I'm shocked. Like my husband said, "We hear it all day long, and we can't escape it." They go home. They shower. They sit on their lanais. They're in peace and quiet. I am asking each of you, would you want that across from you? I don't think so. I don't think you would buy property and listen to that for seven days a week from eight to eight. It causes stress and a lot of anxiety. And if one of you would perhaps like to buy my house, that would be lovely, and then you could live there and listen to it. I am asking that the courts be moved? And I know pickleball is great and wonderful and friends and grandparents and this and that, but they all go home and they live in a quiet house. Maybe move it to the Isles or Burnstorm Meadows or Hounds on Henry, but nobody wants it by them. They come and play and they leave. And they leave us with less property value, anxiety, and upsetment. I thank you.
I'd take that view in that house in a heartbeat if I could afford it. So, my name's Chris Johansson. I live in Burnstorm Isles. I'm a resident and voter. Guess you could call me a frequent flyer and go across the park. I play there a lot. Lived here four years now. Got to know what kind of people recreate out there. But it's been short enough to remember the day that I first saw that park when I was riding the rental bikes that I got it lastly, and we were trying to figure out where to stay, and we were riding along that bike trail and saw these courts that I wasn't aware of even what pickleball was. Couldn't leave it. People were having so much fun, and it was definitely one of the reasons that I came I'm proud of that place. Fact is, pickleballers are not villains, which is kind of what seems to be what we're being accused of. I don't consider pickleball a problem, which is a word that's been used out here that just drives me nuts. Pickleball courts are a gem in this town. A lot of people have said that. Before we choose to reduce the number of courts in this park or board the place up with sound barriers, I want to take a look at the people, what really happens out there on a daily basis, because I've seen it a lot. We laugh out there. We sweat. We scream. We're loud. We have a good time. Sometimes we cry. We compete. We win. We lose. We shake hands. We make friends. We share. We eat. We greet walkers on the sidewalk. We marvel at the view. We marvel at that view. I don't want to block it. We stop play in the middle of our games sometimes to watch dolphins out on the harbor, eagles flying over the sky, parakeets fly through in the trees. Sometimes we watch funnel clouds out on the harbor. We don't just stop. We run like hell. But it happens. We stop for the amazing sunsets. I don't want to block the view. We stop for those that are passing by who ask us questions. What is, what's the sport? What's it called? Why, you know, what's the big deal? We offer them paddles and balls and invite them to play. As a group, we raise money for curing cancer, clean up the park trash, build houses with Habitat for Humanity that Peter was talking about. We give our time...
Could you please conclude?
I'm almost done.
Okay. Please conclude. Thank you.
We give our time, our shoes, our gym shorts to the city's youth that can't afford to We do not have a problem at Gilchrist Park, my friends, and we are not villains. We have a gem of a park known throughout the country. It's one of the finest places to play pickleball in all of the U.S. We'd be hard-pressed to come up with an alternative use for this one acre of parkland that could possibly have the social and economic impact that our downtown. Please do not reduce our footprint. Let the courts stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Jeff Carmen, 309 Shreve. I know there's a lot of back thought now as to whether or not putting pickleball in Gilchrist Park was a mistake. Look around. The community has come together at Gilchrist Park because of pickleball. Putting pickleball there was not a mistake. There was something that was overlooked. And at that time, what was overlooked was sound abatement. If it had been determined at that time that these folks were going to be coming en masse to the courts, maybe perhaps sound abatement would have been on the topic at that point in time. Right now, you're considering fixing something that was overlooked four years ago by putting up sound barriers. Additionally, the park where people stage are out in front of the Federici's home. I can understand the noise and camaraderie that takes place there that affects them. Simply moving our staging area to the other side of the courts would mitigate the noise that they're complaining about in front of their house. Putting up the sound barriers would mitigate the noise in front of their homes. For the last several weeks, the media, these folks over here, have been demonizing this group. We've heard it day in and day out. The fact of the matter is, I have yet to see one of these folks walk up to one of these 80-year-old players and ask them, "What is it that gets you out of your house in the morning? What makes you wake up and want to go through another day?" Instead, they find the 80-year-old person whose level of activity is going from her wheel, her rocking chair, to her bathroom, back to her kitchen, back to her rocking chair, and say, "What do you think about this?" "Oh, I think it's very expensive. I don't think our taxpayer money should be used for it, and it's noisy." Well, okay, talk to the 80-year-old out here that get up every morning and can enjoy another day of life because they're active. So, finally, there's talk about the cost, $64,000, $62,000, $12,000. If those numbers are intimidating to council, then the committee that I just volunteered to be on, why would it exist? To go out, buy a piece of land, and start from ground zero and build up again, but be more than 12, more than 64? So, I, on behalf of the community, I support the sound barriers. I would support moving staging area to the other side of the court. The parking has been corrected. It's on the sides of the street very orderly, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Taylor. I wish I was only 80. Six years ago, when I was 80 and started playing pickleball. Anyway, I went to buy a paddle, and geez, they're damned expensive, so I made my own paddle. Well, actually, I'm making a lot of paddles now, so I, obviously, I love the game, still love the game, still playing the game, and hope at least another four years to be able to play it. And we were playing the other night, and everybody stopped and watched the sunset. It was just gorgeous, and it always is a gorgeous sunset there. We love it. Yes, there's, the Pickleplex will take maybe some of the pressure off. Maybe it'll be a little bit less congested, but people are always going to go there. We appreciate and hope that it stays there for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Bob Smutka. I hate testifying in public, but this is an important thing, so I'm here. We were asked to identify if we're a resident. I'm not, but please consider this. I'm considering buying a place here, and what's number one on my list? Gilchrist Park Pickleball. It's that important to me. It's number one on my list, the reason to move it. Pickleplex is wonderful. It's a great addition, but nothing can match Gilchrist Park Pickleball. You have a world-class location. I kind of travel all over to play pickleball, and I'd say the only courts that are equal yours are Oceanfront Courts in Maui. I mean, it's that spectacular what you have here in Gilchrist Park, and it would really be terrible to lose that. Gilchrist overlooks this wonderful scenic Peace River. I've been up with the Pickleplex. That overlooks the scenic I-75. You know, it's just not the same ambiance up there. Your park is wonderful, family-friendly. Pickleplex is kind of a remote, sterile location. I think the businesses would support Gilchrist Park after we play, bike downtown, do some shopping, catch lunch, whatever, so it's better for that, too. Like I say, I hope you can do whatever option keeps Gilchrist. I don't care. You know, it's definitely worth saving. It would be a real shame to lose Gilchrist Pickleball. Gilchrist Park is named after Albert Gilchrist. He's buried here at the south end of town. Albert was a champion of public health, as others have said. Pickleball kind of is the poster child for a public health sport that you can play if you're four years old or 94 years old, so please don't do away with pickleball at Gilchrist Park, or you'll have Albert turning over in his grave, and we don't want that. Mr. Gilchrist, I'm sure, would be here testifying to support pickleball in his park. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning again. My name is Debbie Sarkisian, and I'm a Punta Gorda city resident. This morning, I'd like to read to you two letters from people who can't be here. The first is written by Mary Stewart, president of Peace River Picklers. The Peace River Picklers is a local pickleball club in which there are 648 members, of whom almost 400 members have Punta Gorda mailing addresses. Good morning. My name is Mary Stewart. I've been a resident of Punta Gorda for the last four years. I chose to live in Punta Gorda not only for the beautiful city that it is, but because it's a place where pickleball flourishes. Where else can you find a venue as beautiful as Gilchrist Park with the multiple recreational activities it provides us? To close the courts at Gilchrist would be a travesty to the pickleball players that love to play there. And what is that telling the rest of the city residents? What's next to go? The basketball courts? What about the kiddie play area with the beating of the drum and the ringing of the bell? The park is used by the citizens of our city, and to tell them they can't use the park is just plain bad business. Pickleplex, which everyone is excited about and looking forward to, was developed as an addition to, not a replacement, of the current courts at Gilchrist. Many of our citizens live close to the park and ride their bikes because that's where they want to play. I, myself, live close to Gilchrist and love playing there. I am in support of the sound barrier. Respectfully submitted, Mary Stewart. The next is from Polino Frizzocco, and he lives at 27275 Rampart Boulevard and is a resident of the city of Punta Gorda. Honorable members of the city council, two years ago, we discovered the game of pickleball at Gilchrist Park, and like many other people, it was love at first sight. We got to meet people from many parts of the country, people that love not only the game, but also the social aspects the game provides. Communities that provide outdoor and physical activities for their citizens have healthier populations. Healthier populations require less services from the city. Pickleball is a sport that can be played by people of any age. It's not unusual for over 100 players to be present at Gilchrist Park on any given day. Whether full-time or seasonal residents, all contribute economically and socially to Punta Gorda. A $12,000 investment for a structural enhancement in sound barrier would pay for itself many times over by addressing concerns of nearby residents while allowing players to remain physically and socially active. I and many other people of this wonderful Charlotte Harbor community hope that you make the decision to keep so many residents happy and healthy. Thank you, Polino Frizzocco. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Anastasia Settle, and I am a resident of Punta Gorda. And I just wanted to say that your ears are probably bleeding from hearing about pickleball, and I'm sorry about that. I truly am. I know that I heard a speaker earlier say that there seems to be a concerted effort from our side, meaning the pickleballer's side, that's the side that I would be on, are present, and I want to clarify that that is, in fact, true. Both I, my husband, and my daughter all live here, and we all work, and we came for the Christmas Eve meeting, and then my daughter came for the January meeting. Neither one of us could get off work, but I made darn sure I didn't have any patients to see this morning so I could be here so you could hear my voice. And I'm not trying to bury you in the details. I just want to say, I do feel bad for the people that live in the neighborhood and for the noise, so I do support the sound abatement. And I think there have been some misrepresentations here. A lot of people that work have a lot of stress, and at the end of the day, I take my bike or my feet, and I walk to Gilchrist Park and I play until eight. We always make sure that the lights go off at eight because we are conscientious of the neighbors, and we don't want there to be a problem. But people here have already said that, like, "We keep the drug dealers out." That's not true. This is my stress relief, and it is better than crack or Valium. It just really helps. I go out there and play, and I wish I did play like the 80-year-olds, but they're still beating me. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning. Is it still morning?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Dawn McGiven, 620 West Marion Avenue. I am proud and honored to be one of three of my family members who have served on council going back to the '40s. I can hear pickleball on Marion, but that's not my point. My point is, is that accepting elected office is one of the highest orders of public service. It offers the opportunity to significantly influence the quality of life in your community. Punta Gorda's city seal, set by resolution number five on November 5, 1924, reads, "In prosperitus in sanitat," meaning prosperity in health or prosperity in sanity or reason. Prosperity and progress of any municipality is in part consequence and in part cause. Peace and prosperity, in fact, are goods which belong to the whole human race. It is not possible to enjoy them in a proper and lasting way if they are achieving, if they are achieving and maintained at the cost of others by violating their rights. Prosperity is auspicious, favorable, marked by success or economic well-being, enjoying vigorous or healthy growth. It means flourishing, blooming, golden, halcyon, healthy, lush, palmy, successful, thriving. The city of Punta Gorda's mission statement is to enhance Punta Gorda's identity as a vibrant waterfront community, unique in character and history, and one of the most desirable places to live, to work, and to visit. I served on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board before and after my term on city council for over a decade and is chair for that board for many of those years. The board's job is and was to advise council on protecting and enhancing our unique historic character. The city and board made it possible for us to receive the honor of the National Register Historic District, and that's no small feat. Gilchrist Park on Charlotte Harbor is unique and historic, named for Governor Gilchrist and planted by founder Isaac de Trbeu to be a park in perpetuity. It was given to the citizens of Punta Gorda, and it was meant to be protected by its governing body, the city council. In the 2005 Habit Master Plan, the citizens were asked for the kind of activities and or use of the park that they wanted and they envisioned. They wanted a place to picnic, walk, and an uninterrupted view of the harbor, a perfect respite for all. A perfect example of what the citizens asked for is Charlotte... A perfect example of what the citizens asked for is Charleston, South Carolina waterfront park, it shares a unique position on a harbor, the same as we have with Gilchrist Park. The park was awarded the 2007 Landmark Award from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I just have a minute, I'm almost done.
Okay, please finish.
Its activities are walking, running, picnicking, sunbathing, and lush landscaping, a fountain and many park benches, and adult swings, a romantic place of quiet and reflection. We have the same unique opportunity, one the citizens have already asked for. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Carlos Oburn, and I have been a resident of Charlotte County since 2004, and I thank the city council committee for allowing me and all present to voice their opinions on this current issue that pertains to the pickleball courts on Gilchrist Park. I'd like to start by expressing my sincere thank you to the city of Punta Gorda for having the vision to place pickleball courts in such a beautiful venue. My family plays here when they come to visit and the courts are empty, they're not that good. The park, walking trail, children's playground, shops, nearby restaurants, boats, folks fishing, music, sunsets, bridge and water truly make this a wonderful place to spend time outdoors to exercise. I don't know of any other pickleball courts on such a pretty setting, but we have a situation that no one foresaw and is tearing us apart from different sides. On one side we have the pickleball community that is made up of the Charlotte County folks along with folks from just about all over the country, including many Canadians and still other folks from other countries that enjoy the friendly, social, and at times the competitive nature of the game. On another side we have the homeowners across and near the park who dislike the noise and the traffic coming from the courts, and we also have the side of this council which will decide between fair and unfair use of a city park. Still, another side is the rest of the city residents and businesses who also need the city council's time to address...